Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for joining us. This is the Aspen City Council regular meeting for March 25th, 2025. That's a call to order. Could we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Councillor Doyle.
Here.
Councillor Guth.
Here.
Councillor Howenstein.
Here.
Councillor Rose.
Here.
Mayor Torrey.
Here. We'll start off this evening. We have scheduled public appearance and proclamation to read, so if you will allow me, proclamation of the City of Aspen, Colorado incorporated in 1881. Whereas this March, we celebrated American Red Cross Month by recognizing the compassionate acts of people in Aspen and by renewing our commitment to lend a helping hand to our neighbors in need. Whereas since Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross more than 140 years ago, generation after generation has stepped up to deliver relief and care across our country and around the world, bringing out the best of humanity in times of crisis. Whereas advancing this noble mission, the volunteers and supporters who now give back through Western Colorado Chapter remain unwavering in their commitment to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of today's emergencies. Whereas their voluntary and generous contributions shine a beacon of hope in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, supporting service members, veterans and their families, or saving lives with first aid, CPR, AED, and other skills. Whereas this work to uplift our community is truly made possible by those who selflessly answer the call to help whenever and wherever it's needed. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of their remarkable service, and we ask everyone to join in their commitment to care for one another. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor, the city council, and the citizens of Aspen do hereby declare the month of March 2025 as American Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens of Aspen to join in supporting the Red Cross's mission to care for one another in times of need. Thank you very much for that. I'll take a round of applause for the Red Cross. Thank you for joining us. If you just introduce yourself, we have a few words from you.
I'm Mike Griot. I'm a volunteer with the Red Cross. During March, we celebrate and honor local community heroes who help ensure their neighbors never face crisis alone. This is made possible by 55 volunteers in the Roaring Fork Valley area who have dedicated thousands of hours of service in the last year. This includes responding to 11 home fires, assisting 13 families, installing 71 smoke alarms, and making 46 households safer. The Red Cross is proud to be part of this community, and we thank you again for the opportunity to recognize and celebrate our amazing local volunteers who turn compassion into action every day. I'd also like to say that I've been involved with the community systems elsewhere, and Picken County and Aspen are incredibly well-prepared, and I'm always super impressed with what you guys do. So, thank you very much.
And thank you, not just to volunteer, but thank you for leading up the organization locally here for us and the extra time and energy that you put in and for joining us here tonight. Thank you so much, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you. That'll bring us to citizens' comments and petitions. This is an opportunity for citizens to address council on items that are not scheduled for a public hearing this evening. We do ask that you limit your comments to about three minutes so that everybody has a fair and equal opportunity to speak tonight. Come right up, Phyllis.
Last time before this illustrious group.
Sort of. We have a brief meeting on the 8th, which will be our last convening as this council.
And then you turn over partway through.
Correct, in the middle of the meeting, yes.
Okay, so I have two brief things. The first one I want to bring up is our dogs. Steve Skinner had a great column last week. I'm a dog lover, but not all dogs are the same, and we have two dogs. I just want to share with you. So, last week, this off-leash dog on the east end of town where we live came running up to our pretty small mini Aussie doodle, and I said to the guy, they're usually big white guys, sometimes they're big women, but whatever. This guy said, "Oh, she's friendly," or "he's friendly." That's what they usually do. And I said, "But I'm not, and that dog, our dog, is anxious, and when a dog comes running up to her, she really gets scared." And he said, "That's not my problem." And I said, "That's obviously not your main problem, but it's a problem." That was my first encounter. A few days later, another big guy with a very big dog that looked like it was part wolf came running up to Bonnie, and she just gets scared, and then she gets, you know, she starts cowering. So, I said to him, "I don't like off-leash dogs coming up to our dog." And you know what he said? He said, "I don't care." So, I probably could have come up with something better, but what I said to him is, "You are what's wrong with the world." And it felt right on. I can't raise every man in America, but this is intolerable. Summer's coming, and the off-leash issue in Aspen was kind of taken on, I believe, and so do a lot of my friends, that it kind of came up in Aspen after Snowmass relaxed their leash laws, and it was done too quickly. It's a real problem in town. So, apparently there's a strict leash law in town. It needs to be extended way into the core, you know, several blocks all around, because somebody's going to get hurt, and with the tourists coming and they bring these dogs, I'm really concerned about the summer. So, that's it on dogs. I want to say something about this council. I have found this the most entertaining and divisive council I've witnessed in probably 20 years. And Torrey, thank you for trying to hold things together. I appreciate all the good you've done. But, you know, I've been thinking about how I've agreed with each of you at different times on important things, but the feeling in town is of divisiveness, and I hear it a lot. And I don't know how you can, I'm the last one to tell people to like someone they don't like. I'm not saying that. I'm saying you have to have a common vision. It's kind of like America after 9/11. People had to have a central theme. We're here for the good of Aspen, the community, as well as good development, as well as the community needs this cohesiveness. And if you care about snow, you have to vote for John Doyle. Thank you.
Thanks, Phyllis. Other members of the public for public comment this evening? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council table. Council members' comments this evening?
Nothing.
Comments tonight? This end?
None tonight.
I'm holding mine until the 8th.
That's what I was going to say, yeah.
Well, then I do have a few for you guys. The first thing I wanted to share was, we got a thank you letter from the Aspen Chapel and Peggy Burke, who thanked us. If you guys remember, we supported $250 for the loneliness seminars that they did, and they just wanted to send on their thank you to us. I have a couple of announcements that are furnished to me by our communications department that I'll go through. The State Highway 82 West Aspen Transportation Needs Study is underway. This is a kickoff to whatever process we will be utilizing for moving towards solutions towards the entrance of Aspen. The city has initiated a comprehensive study of the Aspen 82 West Aspen Transportation Corridor focusing on the area near the Picken County Airport to downtown Aspen. This project aims to assess transportation needs for commuters, visitors, and residents, focusing on safety, traffic flow, multimodal transportation, and environmental considerations. Community members from Aspen to parachute who rely on 82 are encouraged to provide input on this corridor. The public is invited to share feedback regarding safety improvements, wildlife concerns, and other transportation needs by completing an online questionnaire and providing comments via a web map platform at asmincommunityvoice.com. If you haven't seen this before, it is a really great way to make specific comments about different areas of the corridor. As far as this tool goes, this is a very good one. I encourage everybody to log on asmincommunityvoice.com to supply some of your input as we look at the needs study for Highway 82. 'Tis the season to recycle your skis and snowboards. The City of Aspen, in partnership with Colorado Ski Furniture, is collecting skis and snowboards to be recycled at Rio Grande Recycle Center. This is happening now through April 30th, through the end of April. Last year, you'll be surprised to hear that last year, the city diverted over 3,000 pounds of ski and snowboard gear from the Picken County landfill. 3,000 pounds. Items accepted for recycling are old and broken skis, snowboards, bindings, and poles. Helmets and boots are not accepted. Helmets and boots are not accepted. Colorado Ski Furniture, shameless plug, will repurpose the equipment into furniture. And then, probably the most exciting thing I get to announce tonight is the Fix a Leak Week discussion forum. Everybody sat up at once, I get it. Join the City of Aspen for a free utilities discussion forum on March 27th from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. at the Aspen Police Department Community Room. That's on the second floor. Learn how to read your utility bill and use Aspen's advanced metering infrastructure to detect leaks and save money. Enjoy light refreshments and be one of the first 20 attendees to get free leak detection kits. Visit asmen.gov for details. Just to add a little color to this, one of the facilities that I work at a couple of years ago was experiencing some rising costs in our utility billing and our water service, and we indeed engaged in one of the leak checks and found it. It was a costly repair for us, but in the end, it saves a lot of water and money in the long run. So, do take advantage of this. Again, that is March 27th from 5:30 to 6:30. As for my personal comments, there is an election still going on. Tuesday, April 1st, and I still have people walking up to me in the streets saying, "Hey, what happened?" Well, it's still going on. Now, everybody in this room, I'm sure, is very diligent about making their vote and their voice heard, but please, each one of you, if you will just whisper to one or two other people in the coming week and remind them to get out and vote, it would be a great help. In the first round of this election, we had 2,700 people vote. That accounted for about 48% of the electorate. Traditionally, in runoff elections, we see a decrease of several hundred votes and voters, so please, we're trying to keep those numbers up. As I said this morning at the ACRA meeting, it's not about who you vote for, it's about participating. If you can get to the polls, you probably know more about it than you think you do. Please, let your voice be heard. With that, I am looking for agenda amendments this evening, and I do not see any. I will make a note that we were trying to schedule our discussion for an airport advisory board member this evening, but we will have to take that on the 8th, as it is not on our agenda. City manager's comments tonight? We have interim city manager Pete Strecker.
Nothing to add today.
Well done, Pete. Fantastic first showing. And that'll bring us to a board reports. Any board reports this evening?
Yep. We had an after meeting, I think on the 19th.
Yep.
Our order, or one item of business was to discuss the five-year strategic plan, which we discussed here at the council table last week, I think. And the board was in line with it, and there are only some minor suggestions about how the strategic plan is laid out with goals and strategies linked together. And that will be approved, or is up for approval on May 7th.
Thank you, and thank you for the update the other day and taking some of our input back to the board. John?
Yeah, I had a Nordic council meeting that same day, some random notes. There was some vandalism at the Spring Gulch Nordic Trail System, which was really disappointing. Two separate incidents, but I think the person's responsible will be apprehended, and I think there's a restorative justice system in play at that. The Nordic Council's experimenting with some new trail alignments near the high school. Some of them seem to be working quite well. It's an ongoing experiment we'll be working with next year. A lot of the trails have melted out. The Nordic Center's last day was Sunday, March 23rd. North Star is melting out. Owl Creek was still good as of March 19th, and the high school loop was still in play at that time. I'm not sure how it is now. The review management plan subcommittee was incorporating new suggestions, and let's see, talk about rerouting the trail across the Pfister property because of redevelopment going on there in West Buttermilk. Council's planning a loop out at Difficult for next season, and the snowmaking study is progressing nicely with hydrant locations, trail alignments, and water delivery systems being studied and estimated right now. Have the water rights at the golf course and at the high school, so that is full speed ahead. And that's it for Nordic Council.
Thanks, John. Spring always reminds me of all the time I didn't spend on my cross-country skis, so thank you for that additional reminder. Sam?
Yeah, I attended a Northwest Council of Governments meeting. The two things of note was the I-70 Coalition is requesting a finding for an I-70 economics study. The last one was from 2007. They're talking about how congestion has stopped people from stopping in smaller towns because they would lose their spot in traffic, and it would take them forever if they stopped and kept going again. And the other one, joking for you, since you're on the way out of at least the mayoral, is they talked about a proposal to conduct the What Keeps Mayors Up at Night research, which I thought was very entertaining. You probably could have contributed really well to that.
I'll do it tonight when I'm not sleeping.
Yeah, so there you go. Other than that, it was more nuts and bolts.
That traffic on I-70 has the opposite effect on me. I pull over in Georgetown every time it slows down, so I can take a break. I heard today there was something of interest coming up. Northwest COG is holding a meeting, I believe, mid to late April. Anyway, I'll get back with you. I won't be sitting in this chair at that time, but there was something that came up today I heard about that was of interest. I thought somebody from the city should definitely be attending. I forget what it was, though.
Is it QQ meetings?
No.
Okay.
Water? Forget. I'll get back to you on it, though, because somebody should be there for that. Thank you very much. Board reports. Today, I attended ACRA this morning, and the presentation was by the West Mountain Coad, which is Communities and Crisis and Disaster Response. This is a group that actually is a coordinating group. They don't run any facilities or equipment or programs, except for trying to connect those to the right resources. So, they are a coalition in this area of five counties and work on our behalf silently behind the scenes in case of emergency. That will bring us down to our consent calendar this evening. Consent calendar consists of resolutions number 2930 and 44, all related to the Parks Office remodel contract for construction. Resolution number 40, the Aspen Police Department Contract for Property Management Services. Resolution number 41, as-needed service contracts. Resolution 42, contract approval for Rio Grande Parking Garage Sealant Project. Resolution number 45, request to terminate resolution number 177, series of 2017. And resolution number 51, an addendum to the ACRA agreement. Are there any items that council members wish to pull for further discussion? Bill?
Yeah, sorry, in advance. Most of these are quite quick, though. 40, 45, and 51, please.
Okay. Resolution 40 is the Aspen Police Department Contract for Property Management Services.
Thanks, Rob. Quick question on this one would be, do we, I'm super supportive of Romero Group, and I've had, heard good feedback about the work that they're doing at the police department, to be clear. My question is, do we use third-party property management on other city facilities? Should we be, you know, doing this sort of holistically across multiple buildings rather than one building at a time? Are there efficiencies to be gained there? Are we taking the right approach?
So, that's a good question. In this case, this is specifically for our department, the asset department. You know, we have three guys, maintenance guys, is what I call them. We have just shy of about 100,000 feet of commercial space, and then 80 housing units that those folks take care of. So, this offloads that one building to the Romero Group for us, which is a big help, and you know, the nature of the police department being a 24/7 operation, we all live down the valley. If something happened, we, you know, I'm an hour away if someone calls me in the middle of the night. So, that's the purpose and kind of the thought process behind the Romero Group with APD. Whether or not there's other opportunities, for sure, I'm trying to think off the top of my head if there's any other facilities that are third-party. Pete, do you know? Actually, yeah, for one, I know Ruby Park is. Ruby Park, we have someone manage that. It seems to be, off the top of my head, that it's more the 24/7 facilities is where we have gone that route, and that, you know, stuff this day-to-day, nine to five, more that we take care of it, so.
Got it. All right, I guess I would just leave you with a request to discuss that as part of your sort of annual planning. Does it make sense to do others? Does it not make sense to? Thanks for the explanations. I have no further comments or questions.
And just a little bit extra discussion about that. Two, there were two applicants for this, or two responses, I should say. Is that few, or is it just in this, is this so specific, or was that not a lot? And the reason I'm asking that is kind of along what Bill's saying is, is there a trend here that this is getting harder and harder? There's conversations come up at this table over the last year about the city in some way having a, maybe going with more of our own management or maintenance and oversight? Should we be beefing up that as we look for it? And you don't have to answer this right now. I'm not going to ask you policy questions, but I think that it does kind of lead to that same discussion. If there's only two that are vying for a contract like this, does that say that in the future, we're going to have even more problems in this kind of area?
So, in my experience, property managers in this valley are tough to come by, that have capacity, and then good ones are even harder to come by. So, that's just my personal experience. And Pete, I think Pete's nodding as well, yeah.
And Pete, I would just say, you know, this should probably be on the radar, maybe something that's a discussion for council retreat coming up or what have you, but this has come up a couple of times over the last year or so, so.
Yeah, and Rob's right, that the market is such that a lot of the other properties that need services as well are competing for the same group of people. We've had to go out to bid on some of the properties, like the housing properties that we have, and we have very minimal number of bids and some very high bids on some of that work. So, it's something that we keep wrestling with and we'll keep looking at, but it's definitely not that easy to find a lot of resources in this area.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Resolution number 45?
Thanks, Mike. No specific questions from me on this one. I just wanted to make a bit of a statement, which is to say that I am supportive of terminating this, and we've discussed this in executive session a couple of times. But I do want to acknowledge that this has been a fruitful and productive agreement in the past for the city and for Belly Up, and it's been a symbiotic arrangement in the past. And I think Mike and Belly Up have discussed what's not working with it today and how they might be productive together in the future. So, I just wanted to thank Belly Up for the work that they've done in the past, the shows that they've brought to the Wheeler in the past. Mike brings different skill sets and different experiences than we may have had in-house at the city in the past, and I'm looking forward to seeing what the continued good work that Mike brings to the Wheeler, and I'm hopeful that there are some productive relationships, symbiotic relationships that develop between the two entities in the future.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
And then 51, this is a comment more for my fellow counselors, which is, given that we are discussing some items that are, I think, fairly intertwined with this resolution in executive session tonight, I would like to request that we postpone discussion of resolution 51 till the next meeting.
Could you elaborate more? I know we're talking about ACRA lease negotiations in executive session, but without breaking confidentiality, what are you?
If I'm not mistaken, and perhaps I am, but if I'm not mistaken, I think that we are being asked to extend this agreement that has certain lease provisions within it, and we are going to be discussing those lease provisions tonight, and therefore I think it only makes sense to discuss those lease provisions before we extend the agreement.
Pete or Kate?
Yep. I think the impetus for this right now is the aspect that this lease will terminate at the end of March, and so this would be the last regular meeting to at least extend that for one additional month while we still go through conversations about the long-term plans for ACRA and the lease.
I agree with Mr. Strecker. I don't, I would suggest, I don't think this at all inhibits your ability to negotiate any of those terms. That we're seeking direction from you in executive session tonight about the future of our relationship with ACRA. I think in this case, we just need some time to have those discussions, and this gives ACRA the assurance that they can stay in their space for at least another month while we do that. That's all this does.
Okay, thanks for those explanations. I'm fine with the one-month extension.
Okay. With that, no more questions on consent calendar items? Take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Seconded.
Motion seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote for the consent calendar, please?
Councillor Doyle.
Yes.
Councillor Guth.
Yes.
Councillor Howenstein.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
Maritoria?
Yes, thank you. Uh, that'll move us down on our agenda to public hearings this evening. Ordinance Number Three, City of Aspen Spring Supplemental.
It's a very tall chair. Thank you, Mayor and Council, Matt Grau, Budget Manager for the City of Aspen, and we are here tonight for second reading of the 2025 Spring Supplemental, Ordinance Three, Series 2025. Um, as introduced at first reading, the Spring Supplemental includes 56.1 million in requested budget authority over our original adopted budget. Um, this includes 48.3 million in one-time and capital carryforwards, which is about 86% of the ask. 2.6 million in new requests, 1.5 million in technical adjustments, and 3.4 million in departmental and central savings requests. Um, the Spring Supplemental also includes about 2.6 million in additional revenue projections for 2025. Since first reading, there are three changes incorporated into our second reading of this ordinance. Uh, pre-audit opening balance adjustments of about 2.6 million, the largest being the receipt of the city share of county sales tax into the general fund, and that is incorporated to Exhibit A. Uh, there's a slight decrease in the capital carryforward amounts, uh, just over $11,000, so minimal, um, to reflect final 2024 invoices received. And then the technical adjustment of $212,000 for the street snowblower purchase, which council approved on March 11th via Resolution 35, Series 2025. Including all pre-audit adjustments, the revised 2025 ending fund balance is now projected to be, uh, 325.4 million, a net increase of 31.8 million, or about 10.8% over our original projections that were shared in the fall during budget adoption. Section Two of Ordinance Three, Series 2025, um, includes about $800,000 of carryforward authority for Truscott II capital projects, and there were no changes from first reading. Um, staff did have a few questions from first reading, and we incorporated additional information into the packet for tonight. Um, are there any questions that may need to be answered now? Or was the additional information included sufficient?
Additional info was fine for me. My comment is, is sort of outside the scope of Spring Supplemental, perhaps, but I've brought it up before, I'll bring it up again. Some of these housing projects that we own and manage are, and I'm referring specifically to Truscott, which there was a question about, and that was answered by Matt. I, I'm just not sure that the city is the best steward of some of these assets, and I, I think that there's a way to put, um, deed restrictions and provisions on some of these properties and still sell them and maintain, um, capital for other projects, um, and just have someone else that might be better at operating, managing, and maintaining these assets than we are, um, take over. So some for consideration as, as you're making decisions in the future, but it seems like we spend an awful lot of money maintaining these assets, um, to a good standard. I'm not, I'm not saying anyone doesn't do a good job maintaining them, it's just very expensive for a whole bunch of bureaucratic reasons that a private owner may not be subject to.
Our, um, let's take Truscott as a specific. Are Truscott repairs, uh, line itemed out in our asset management plan?
Um, it depends on the property manager as to how much specificity they put on the capital plan. Um, I think Truscott actually has a pretty detailed, uh, list of improvements or maintenance items in its plan over the 10-year that we look at. I would say that Truscott, I mean, and it depends on which property of the two Truscott properties, but one was tax credit and one was not. Um, so there's varying levels of rents being charged and therefore varying levels of resources at times to be able to do some of that work. So it, I definitely think the city in its past, having some tax credit properties did maybe hamstring itself a little bit in terms of being able to, uh, keep some of those properties up as well as we would always like. There are examples where we have gone out to, uh, public-private partnership and had other property, uh, managers as a result of the rental properties. Um, I know the city does, uh, think that that, uh, operation and model has worked fairly well, so that is something that we're still considering for new developments.
Yeah, I think it kind of comes, uh, uh, in parallel with the conversation we had earlier about property management and the like. What we've seen i- i- in the landscape there has changed so much in the last 10 years, um, as well as our built environment. I, there, there's maybe needs to be some internal conversations around capital maintenance and improvement going forward for everything, you know? We're, we're, our, our built environment is somewhat in a midlife crisis, you know, and, and, and nearing end of, of lifespan and, and the like, and, um, so, you know, another opportunity going forward is that maybe there should be a conversation internally around what the future of that looks like. It's my suggestion. I think it's gonna be, I think it's a more pressing issue now than it's ever been, so that's my suggestion. Um...
Motion? Sorry? I said, do you want a motion?
No, public hearing, but, um, did you have anything else that you wanted to go over? Other items?
I was just gonna say, if there are no additional questions, staff recommend second reading approval of the revised spending plan for 2025 via Ordinance Three, Series 2025, to incorporate the additional authority requested through the Spring Supplemental.
Okay. Um, uh, if there are any members of the public that, uh, wish to lobby their objections, now is the time. Public hearing is open on this item. Any members of the public for public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. This is Ordinance Number Three, Series of 2025.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance Number Three, Series of 2025.
Second. Motion and a second for the discussion. Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote for Ordinance Number Three, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Hovenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Maritoria?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You as well.
Six years, Kate, I'm finally getting the hang of this, right? 5:35?
Maybe I'll get it someday. Um, Mayor and Council staff is requesting an executive session, uh, pursuant to CRS Section 246-46402, Sub 4, Sub A, for the purposes of the, to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of any real, personal, and other property interests, and Sub 4, Sub B, conferences with an attorney for the local public body for the purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions, and Sub 4, Sub E, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators. The specific items of discussion involve the following topics: rights, road, water project, potential litigation, and ACRA lease negotiations. Uh, the recording of an executive session shall be retained for at least 90 days after the, the date of the executive session, and the city clerk's office will do so.
I move we go to executive session.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote for executive session, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Hovenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yeah.
Maritoria?
Yes. We will be adjourning from downstairs, so we will not be reconvening for any further discussion or decision-making. We want to say thank you, as always, to grassroots. Don't forget, get out and vote, April 1st is the election day. Thank you, have a good night.